Good evening and welcome to the meeting of the Queensberry Union Free School Board Education Meeting. The board president has called the meeting to order, and please join me standing for the fledge of the flag. By the way, this is why United States of America. Before we begin, we have board members on.
Hi.
Hi, yes, Chairman. Belden's on.
How good.
Hi, Kevin. Good evening, and Amy. Hi, yeah, okay. So, we're gonna begin tonight with a presentation by Mr. Mannix.
Thank you, Mr. Mannix. We rarely take the opportunity to thank the school board for all they do. And when you're volunteering your time and you're dedicating yourself and you're dedicating yourself to a district, it requires a lot of work. It requires nights, weekends, a lot of reading, a lot of keeping up to date. Just with many of you just sat through a long audit committee meeting where you were able to see the finances of the district, and really just genuinely care about all aspects. So, I know the week went by, and it was the week of October 18 through 22. And we, as an administrative team, I think I can speak for our fellow administrative team, our central office team, we're very, very thankful for all you do for Queensberry School. It means a lot. And when you took on these roles, you didn't know we were going to move into COVID. You didn't know we were going to move into building projects and taking care of every facet of the district. So, we really appreciate it from the bottom of our hearts. We do have certificates of recognition for each of you tonight, and I do want to announce each of your names. We did get you a token. Only some of your items have shown up yet. They're probably sitting out on the East Coast somewhere on the ship. But they're not here, but they will be as soon as we get them. But we want you to know that we thank you for all you do, genuinely. It's really, really appreciated, all your extra time. So, this is Belden, this is Blidenburg, Mr. Cabana, this is Flaherty, Mr. Hardesty, Mr. Mannix, Ms. McLoy, Dr. Shea, and Mr. Weaver. Thank you. I wanna give them a warm round of applause. Thank you, Mr. Mannix.
Thank you, Mr. Mannix. And it's not on the agenda, but I do wanna have a piece. Going to do that, Mr. Dawes, I'll just speak for goodness on the project of the Pride of the Board to the high school sewer pipe issue. Happened actually very suddenly and let the board get a mouth or what's going on.
So, thank you. So, I'm John Dawes, coordinator of capital projects here. So, Mr. Mannix asked me to give you a quick rundown on our emergency project that we have at the high school. So, a couple of weeks ago, we realized there was a clogged sewer line at the high school. We had some sanitary issues, toilets backing up, et cetera. So, we did bring in a camera firm to come on in and camera that line to see where that blockage was. They found the spot underneath the gold gym is where there was a blockage. So, it's not underneath the wooden part of it, it's in the storage room area. So, just like anything else that we do in life, we wanted a second opinion. So, we brought in another company that would camera the line as well. They found the same blockage at the same spot. So, we marked an X on that concrete floor. We hired a general contractor to come on in, start demoing that floor to dig down approximately seven to eight feet is where the pipe is to make that repair. So, the blockage, it's not, we couldn't snake it, we couldn't release it or anything. We feel that's where the pipes connect together. They came apart, so they kinda went, you know, down a little bit and they spread apart. So, now we're getting all sorts of like dirt and everything else. What we found, when we did snake it, some of the dirt did come out. So, that's who is, that's what's going on right now. They started today. We're thinking it'll be about two weeks to finish the project. And that's, hopefully, that will get that pipe fixed, get all our toilets up and running. Questions?
If there's more any questions, it's agenda item, we're going on payment of expenses, those one material where done.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, we reached the point of open forum. There's been some rules and guidelines, I should say, got some rules and procedures up on the board to outline the procedures we follow for open forum. Just to remind you all residents of the Queensberry Union Free School, there is a go only will be invited to present cases to the Board of Education. And I mentioned that just because you're gonna be coming to the board, not to the public. It's your opportunity to discuss something with the board. And it's not gonna be a question and answer situation. You can address the topic through us. If there is questions that require follow-up, we will direct that to the proper administrator to follow up with your very timely fashion. So, all of your voices will be heard. And we do require them to sign up, give us your address and phone number for each open forum. I have the sign up here. There'll be two open forums, one now and one at the end of the meeting. So, if you do wish to speak at the second open forum, please just sign up. There's another sign up at that. If you don't get a chance, please come back and do that. The first thing we have on this is Pamela Conner.
Hello, I'm Pam Conner, and my address is 14 Green Main Road in Queensberry. My third child is a senior in high school this year. And I really just wanted to kind of thank you all for the work that you're doing in making policy surrounding the COVID situation. Kids being back in school has helped a great deal with a lot of the anxiety I see in the children in our family, the extended family that I have. We still have some who are so anxious that they aren't able to make it in. But the fact that you're making it possible to come back with masking and vaccinations and the sanitation that you're doing has been a huge improvement in the lives of the kids who were really in flux going back and forth and trying to be virtual in a situation when children aren't prepared to do that. I myself work with children 18 months to five years old, children who will not be able to be vaccinated for quite a long time. So, knowing that your policies are helping to keep many more children safe in your school from developing COVID and taking that home to their younger children who cannot get a vaccination yet is really a huge important thing. Children in my school, many of them are special needs and are medically frail. And being exposed to this virus could be really a major life-endup situation for them. So, I just wanted to spend my appreciation to all of you for the decisions you're making. I know that when we step into this kind of a position, you don't necessarily expect to be public policymakers, but that's essentially what you have to come. And it comes with people being happy and people not being happy about it. And it's a hard position to be in. So, I just wanted to spend some of my appreciation and thank you for the hard work you do.
Next, we have Elizabeth Penny.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Elizabeth Penny. I'm a resident of the town of Queensberry. I would first like to thank the sheriff's officers who are here. And I know that I really do appreciate your presence here. And I know that everyone here does appreciate your presence, so I'd just like to say a thank you to you. I would also like to recognize that our sports teams did a great job this season. And a special shout out to the girls soccer team and to the girls swimming and diving teams. I'd also like to speak tonight about the health during the winter and the importance of encouraging physical movement among our students, especially outdoors. We live in an area where snow can begin as early as November, usually last into March, sometimes into April. This has an effect on our residents and their health, beginning with our children, because many people around here basically hibernate during all of those months. It's especially hard on our residents who live in apartment settings, which many of our students do. Also, we live at the 43rd latitude, and this is actually important to note since we know that vitamin D deficiency increases with an increase in distance away from the equator. Additionally, certain diseases such as MS and depression also increase proportionally with increases in latitude. And all of this comes down to a lack of sunlight and a lack of vitamin D. What I would like to see the district encourage is time outside, no matter the season. Recession, I would love to see outdoors whenever possible. And I would like to see P O R for both the WHBI and for the middle school, always. And I would also like to suggest that maybe the district could have maybe even a winter snow festival, invest in snowshoes, cross-country skis for families to check out and use across the campus. So, if we could celebrate our four-season weather, it will pay dividends in the health of our students for years to come, which ends up being a healthy community and also will end up paying dividends for our economy. Sports are certainly an important part of this. But many of our youngest students don't have the opportunity to be in sports, so it's important to just have some unorganized time outdoors. So, I appreciate your time. I appreciate your attention to the health of our students in many ways. And I appreciate your dedication to our school district. Thank you.
Sarah Kenny. Good evening.
What do you think? My name is Sarah Kenny. I'm a resident of Queensberry. I graduated from Queensberry last year, and I am now a student at the University of Albany, and I'm a part of the honors college. First of all, I would like to thank everyone in the Queensberry education system for providing me with a strong foundation for my college education. I feel like I was taught the skills that I need to be a successful college student, especially because I was a part of the ID diploma program. While at college, I'm seeing that those that have participated in the ID diploma program are around the country, are better prepared for the challenges of college, even if they did not receive their diploma or participate in the full diploma program. Furthermore, from what I have experienced, ID students are less stressed by the increased difficulty of education at college because they were exposed to a more rigorous course though in high school with the support of systems that their schools provide, as well as still living with their parents while their school is becoming more difficult. I believe that it would be beneficial to introduce some of the ID ideology to most classes. For example, learning how to research and put your findings into a coherent essay. The skills taught by the ID program do not have to be taught at the difficulty of ID courses to teach the skills that all college students need. Additionally, while taking, while talking to other ID diploma students from around the country, I've learned about ID courses such as ID film. It would be beneficial to Queensberry ID students to offer a greater number of courses such as arts courses because many Queensberry students that are taking the ID courses are best students. And they are unfortunately unable to continue in arts classes, which I know that many do would like to. I would like to once again thank Queensberry for the opportunities that I've been given. I appreciate the job that you're doing as school board members. I know that all of your decisions have the students' best interests at heart. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you very much. Next, Heidi Caliday.
Good evening. Yes, I'm Heidi Caliday, and I am a senior Avery in eighth grader Maya. And I just wanted to kind of show up tonight in support of the school board and all of our teachers, all the administrators. I'm also, I'll say, a public health registered nurse. So, I'm pretty well versed on everything that's going on with COVID and whatnot. And I just think that it's important in such a tumultuous time, when I know it's gotta be so tough for you all and for all of our teachers and to be going through, like, it's like you're darned if you do, you're darned if you don't. And a lot of times, the negative, if people have negative news, they tell a million people. And if they have positive news, they may tell one or two. So, I'm just here to be one voice to let you all know that me and my family completely support the district, 100% believe that you're putting our children's health and safety first and foremost. You're taking the most up-to-date, scientific-based information and applying that diligently. And our family supports the district 100%, appreciate everything that everybody's doing. Thank you.
And you all were participating in the open forum, and so it's a really important part of meeting to have the community help with going on it to talk about the thoughts and feelings of the programs we operate in. So, thank you very much. So, we'll move on to the business items.
Recommended the board move business item A, motion related to the tax sorcery service as presented.
Second, please.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? There are none. All favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 By Amy?
Yes.
Oh, thank you. Welcome, Amy. Any opposed? Any objections? Motion passes.
Recommended the board move business item B, motion to accept the financial statement independent artist for action fashion activity funded for through 2021.
Motion, please. Second?
Second.
Thanks. Any discussion on the motion? There are none. All favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Any objections?
Recommended the board move business item C, the resignation of the secret process for the emergency at the high school.
Motion, thanks, Tim. Second, please.
Second.
Need a roll call? Any discussion on the motion?
Trustee Belden.
Aye.
Dean Blidenberg.
Aye.
Trustee Cabana.
Aye.
Trustee Flaherty.
Aye.
Trustee Hardesty.
Aye.
Trustee Mannix.
Aye.
Trustee McLoy.
Aye.
Aye.
Trustee Weaver.
Aye.
Recommended the board move business item D, authorization of the emergency project at Queensberry High School.
Motion, please. The move. Second?
Second.
Brian, thank you. Any discussion on the motion? There are none. It's one.
Trustee Belden.
Aye.
Blidenberg.
Aye.
Trustee Cabana.
Aye.
Trustee Flaherty.
Aye.
Trustee Hardesty.
Aye.
Trustee Mannix.
Aye.
Trustee McLoy.
Aye.
Amy.
Aye.
Trustee Weaver.
Aye.
Business consent. Recommended the board move business consent items B through D.
Does anyone need any of the items? And E to be removed before we move on to the next agenda? Are you not gonna have a motion, please? Weaver, thank you, second. All favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Any objections?
Educational items. I recommend the board move to approve action item A, motion to accept the resignation for retirement purposes of Patricia Fielding, Q E S grade three teacher, with sincere appreciation and regret, effective 1-1-22.
Motion, please. Second. Any discussion on the motion? There are none. All favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Any objections?
I recommend the board move to approve action item B, the motion to accept the resignation for retirement purposes of Barbara Flaherty, Q E S special education teacher with sincere appreciation and regret, effective 6-30-22.
Motion, please. Second? Thank you for, any discussion on motion B? There are none. All favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Any objections? Motion, please, Gary.
I recommend the board move to approve action item C, the motion to approve the probationary teaching assistant appointment of Samantha Vanderwater to a four-year probationary appointment as a teaching assistant at the middle school.
A motion, please. Thank you, Stacy.
Second? Second.
Thank you, Brian. Any discussion on motion C? There are none. All favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Any objections? Any seat, Gary.
I recommend the board move to approve action item D, the motion to approve the probationary teaching assistant position of Kimberly Killingsworth to a four-year probationary appointment assigned to the elementary school.
Motion, please. Stacy, second? Thank you, John. Any discussion on motion D? There are none. All favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Any objections? Motion, please, Gary.
Action item E, I recommend the board move to approve the long-term substitute teaching appointment of Michelle Fordquist as a Q M S long-term substitute teacher.
A motion, please. Thank you, Stacy, second.
Second.
Thank you, Brian. Any discussion on motion E? There are none. All favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any objections? Motion E, Gary.
I recommend the board move to approve educational consent items F through R.
While we take the consent vote, any of those items need to be removed when they're done and further discussed. Take a motion, please. Amy? Can you give me a second? All favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Any objections? Then agenda F through R, Gary. Four committee reports.
Actually, we went to R, there's S T U D.
Yeah, F through R.
That I have here. Is that, is that under the, this is driving on the wrong page. This is consent. Oh, yeah, that's, sorry.
I mean, for your boards, I know finance committee, that's.
I, I have. Okay. We had two meetings. We had two meetings, one up over the 18th, and the other one was today, November 8th. Gonna try and just summarize both together. First one had to do with the elementary school playground. Some of the swings were removed because of the straps, rope levers been removed. Still need some new bolts and some signage there. In terms of the security project, cameras in the middle school that works been completed, cameras in the high school been completed, and exterior cameras in the intermediate school been completed. Mr. Dawes sent out a safety, safety committee survey to the teachers in the WHBI. They're still collecting the results of the survey, and I should have a report on that at a later date. We've also talked about some of emergency preparedness mapping. Right now, we have maps in all the buildings, all rooms, with the exception of 10 in the high schools that are going to be placed there soon. We've been talking about lightning protocols in terms of the weather, lightning, in terms of dismissal. And there's still work to be done with regards to the safety of the kids leaving school during electrical storms. So, there'll still be more to report on that. We're supposed to go to visit, the evacuation visit today, but that got canceled for a later date. We also met and talked about the safety over at the WHBI playground. We've made some changes there. And I know that in the spring, hopefully, there'll be a new playground going in at some point. So, that's being talked about. We also, let's see, there was a question about the right-of-way fencing and fencing that finishes right by the administration building. Yet there's no fencing that goes along the northway that runs parallel to cross-country trails. There's a little concern about something happening where somebody could come in, park their car on the side of the northway, come in through that way. And we're still working on, maybe, the Department of Transportation says it's not putting up fence. But we still are looking at different, different ways to maybe rectify that situation. We also have emergency management guide that we're trying to replace or maybe just modify a little bit for everybody to have in their classroom. And it's just goes over all the steps for each emergency response. And let's see, last of all, there's talk, the talk about reviewing a license plate reader to place at the entrances of schools to maybe get a better handle on cars coming in and out that don't belong, coming in at school. There's a lot going on in those meetings, and that's that.
Thank you, Brian. The finance committee meetings. The finance committee, couple of slides. The finance committee got it last week. Some linear discussion regarding budget. Some no more in-depth conversation about the funds that were received from the federal government. Quick prospects with the, this paper from the New York State budget this year. Work that needs to be done to allocate the funds to federal funds. In-depth look at the overtures. Dispatch this evening on reallocating some funds to the tax sorcery reserve. Talked a little bit about the use of some of the funds for the building project that's coming up. That's a short and sweet word, and a well over an hour of discussion about money. That's a short and sweet version of well over an hour of discussion about funds. But all in all, the school finances are in excellent shape. We're very well prepared for this year and next. There's some very necessary acquisitions that we're trying to fill. Utilize some of these funds and the most appropriate way to help the most number of kids. And we're on our way to, to accomplish that. So there'll be a lot more coming after the further study here here, by just even. Or member comments?
I would like to recognize one of our volleyball athletes and also daughter, our esteemed president of the Board of Education. Rachel Maddox being named MVP of the foothills council for volleyball this past weekend. It's a great honor for her and I'd like to congratulate Rachel. Also, I would like to give the request, President Maddox, a moment of silence. We lost. Fourth grade teacher that taught at the WHBI. At least thirty, maybe a few years more than that, plus years. Debbie Fenton was an excellent teacher here. We were very fortunate, you know, we were a family. Our daughters were educated by Debbie. She's a great, great person, a great educator, hangover golfer and a sweet, sweet person as well. So we have a moment of silence for Debbie. Thank you.
Other board member comments? As mentioned by a member of the public, Mr. Key, they put you on the spot with the. Been a very successful fall season for Queensgrade Athletics. Can you be able to recap just a couple of the, not specifics, just team line? I know in just about every sport, I think there were sectional winners and. House of winners and, but you can look at your notes you got prepared for tonight.
Got them right here.
There you go. You read every one of them, I know that.
I've had a lot of them. I'm not sure if this is on. I don't think it's working right now, but I'll, I'll use my coaching voice. So again, we've had a very successful fall athletic season. It's still continuing, which is very exciting. Kind of recapping, this weekend, our varsity cross-country teams participated on Friday down at Saratoga at the section two championships. So it's a four classification meet, so we compete in class B. Our boys were runner-up. Our girls finished fourth overall. We have three athletes who will be participating in the New York State championships next Saturday down at Shenango State Park in Shenango Forks. Jack Hicks was second overall in the boys' race, in the B race. Ran an outstanding time, only second to the number one ranked runner in New York State, who's being recruited by about every division one school in the country. We also had two qualifiers in the girls' race. Maddie Powers finished fourth overall and Miranda Habshee was eighth, both qualifying for the state meet. We also had an outstanding girls' swimming and diving performance. Our girls outdid their seeds and finished third overall at the championships. Anna Bear, who was a senior swimmer. I don't want to steal her thunder, but was, has committed to Old Dominion to swim. Also set a school record in the one hundred backstroke. She was also the winner of that event and the winner of the one hundred butterfly. Sadie Jamaro was a top-three place finisher in her event, and it escapes me at the moment. Ally Johnston was a top-three place finisher in her event. And we also had two. Relays, medley relay and the four hundred free that were top-three finishers in section two as well. Ally Johnston, Anna Bear, Sadie Jamaro. There was a. No girl who's in eighth grade who's part of one of those relays. And I'm sorry, one other female athlete that I. Both car. Unspotted, I forget her last name. Again, a tremendous meet. Laura Dickerson was fourth in diving, which was a great accomplishment as well. Very proud of that team and how they competed. Our boys avenged the loss to April Park in football in the class A semifinals. Believe we, our record isn't indicative of the talent that we have on our team. I think we've played the toughest class A schedule in New York State. And we're hoping to avenge another loss this coming weekend at Shenandoah High School at seven o'clock with a rematch against Burn Hill's Boston Lake. So those, those sports competed here this weekend. Prior to that, girls' soccer had an outstanding season. Just a tremendous. Season, being first team to, in school history to make it to the section two finals, but not only to be there, but to win it and be section two champions in class A. They traveled out to Chittengale last Tuesday and competed against a nationally ranked new Hartford team who's ranked number one in New York State, hasn't lost a game in thirty-five games. So they, they competed one-nothing at halftime and then had to press, but they, they just had an outstanding season and were proud of all the girls. Bridget Duffy has committed to West Point to play both girls' lacrosse and women's soccer. So we're, we're very excited for Bridget and all that that team has accomplished. Boy soccer made it to the section two semifinals, lost a heartbreak one-zero decision to LaSalle in overtime on a penalty kick. I guess she lived by the sword, they died by the sword because we won on penalty kicks the week before at home against Southland Falls. But they had, they had a tremendous season as well. Girls' volleyball, again, competed this weekend. They. Battled, but were really up against one of the best high school volleyball teams that I've seen in a really, really long time in Burn Hills, Boston Lake, who I believe is ranked number one in the state. But they played outstanding, undefeated in the foothills council. Is a tremendous feat and congratulations to Rachel Beth Mannix on being named the foothills council MVP, which was announced at the section two championships. We had three outstanding golfers this year qualify for, for sectionals and compete at a high level. I'm proud to say Tanner Fearman has qualified for the state meet, which will be held in the spring. Adriana Delabella competed on the girl's side and performed very well in the section two championships as well. This is only the second year that girls' golf has existed in section two. Trying to think of what else. Got much girls' tennis, foothills council champions, section two runner-up. That was a few weeks ago, that season ended. But again, tremendous, tremendous season for, for those girls. Really.
Field hockey.
Field hockey, field hockey competed again, did very well throughout the season in the foothills council. Ran up against Burn Hills, Boston Lake in the semifinals and lost a tough game in which they really competed for, for a while. Really excited about the capital project because I think that is going to be a game changer in a lot of sports when our student athletes have the opportunity to practice and play on an artificial surface. The, the difference that that makes when teams have that ability is glaring. We see it every year at the end of the season when the most important games of the year are played on that surface. And then we have to travel and rent space in other locations. So I think it's going to be a game changer for our programs as we move forward. All of the teams are doing wonderfully this, this fall. Had a great, great experience to be outside for ninety percent of them, see kids interacting, having fun, engaged. It is, is really great to see and hopefully we can carry that momentum into the, into the winter sports season. So, thank you. Hopefully it's comprehensive enough.
Thanks, Rachel. I'm sorry, put you on the spot. Okay, any other board member comments? The only argument I mentioned was we get Ronnie DeJohn hosted an ID recognition night to recognize all the ID students and one of the program. Lot of exciting things going on with that program. Wanted to hear from. About that, so it's a still strong program, it's getting stronger with the closer students from other districts that come here to take the ID classes. So it's doing up, but growing, so. We look forward to that in the future. What other boardroom comments? We got our second open forum. One person signed up, Brooklyn Tucker. Baby Miss Tucker.
Hope day nineteen is over. Sure, people will catch it now, but what does it matter? We can't do anything about it. It's just like the floor of the common code. It'll never disappear, so what's the plan wearing masks at school? When I wear a mask, I feel like I'm behind, trapped in one of those invisible boxes, still making me smile. Masks are also backed socialization and help. The minimum age, the minimum age to be required to wear a mask is two. Kids that are aged two, they'll have fully developed lungs and masks can really damage their breathing. For kids like me, masks make it really so bad at socializing and it make it hard to make contact. Also, they're supposed to breathe oxygen and breathe out carbon dioxide, but because of the piece of fabric practically glued to my nose and mouth. He breathed in the breath and it really breathed out, it put me dioxide. That can really damage their lungs, no matter what age we are. For example, I go to a dance class, they require you to wear masks when dancing. And I often feel disgusted at the class because I get tired and it makes my face hard and I often get headaches, so. It might not feel necessary to get rid of masks to you, but have you ever thought of how it would be to be a kid who has to wear a mask on when they're playing sports? When they're recess running around and when the intolerable summer heat, but the extra heat from the mask practically bakes you? I just told you many reasons why masks certainly one with school. I'm taking action despite going for it. I want things to change, masks have to go.
There's nothing else to come before the board. We have a number of informational items. Guy won't go through them, but. If you have any questions, I'll. I'll, one of the administrators, if you have any items. If you have any executive sessions this evening. pursuant to subdivision one B of the old means law, discuss proposed pending or current litigation. pursuant to one F of the old means law to discuss employment history of a particular person. And pursuant to subdivision three of section one oh eight of the old means law to discuss matters made confidential by federal or state law involving student matters concerned with perp law. And involving attorney-client privilege matters pursuant to section forty-five oh three of the New York Civil Practice Laws and Rules. So without, we have a motion for a second session, please. Do we remain due second please? Second. Thank you, Brian. All favor?
Aye.
Thank you all for attending. Appreciate the visitation and taking the time to come out. Those online as well, thank you very much. And I'll pass in the evening, I believe we can get a separate link, probably.
Yes, I got it.
Thank you. Evening, everybody.